Okay, good evening, everyone. I am going to call the May seventeenth City Council meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. Due to the Governor's proclamation 2028 relating to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. And at this point, we'll take a moment to take a roll call of the council members in attendance. So please stay here when I call your name. Councilmember D. Michelle.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz.
Here.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray.
Here.
Thank you. And Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
That's great. Thank you.
Mayor, excuse me. I think you may have missed Council President Hunt. I'm here.
Council President Hunt, my apologies. Thank you. Going a little too fast. I was more concentrating on the fact that poor Councilmember Walsh always goes last. Wondering if we could change the order sometime. Thank you for catching that, City Clerk, and my apologies. The next thing on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. And I would appreciate it if you could join me, but please meet yourself. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on the agenda this evening is Audience Comments. And for those of you who have submitted the online form to make your comments, we will call your names shortly. If you have joined us tonight and you would like to make comments, but you did not sign up in advance, please raise your virtual hand. And to do that, you can press star three on your phone. If you are joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This can vary by device. One option might be to go to the participant panel and choose the raised hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. There will be a public hearing tonight on AB eight one two three, the 2022-2027 Capitol Improvement Plan, including the Transportation Improvement Program. And if you would like to make comments on this topic, you will have an opportunity to later in the meeting. And City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Mayor, no one has signed up in advance to make comments. And I'm monitoring the attendee list now for raised hands. And at this time, I do not see that anyone has raised a hand to indicate a desire to speak.
Thank you, City Clerk. So as a reminder, if you do want to provide written comments to the mayor and city council, you can do that at any time by sending it to the citycouncil@isiquawad.gov email address. Council President Hunt, I'm going to turn it over to you now that we've confirmed that you're here. See if you have any email comments to summarize that came in on any of tonight's agenda topics.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Council President Hunt. And we did receive several emails that specifically reference items that are on our agenda this evening. And I will summarize comments that we've received by email on these topics between now and the last time that we've discussed topics or topics that we've discussed multiple times. And this is something that we have been doing while we've been having virtual meetings. The first email comment that we received on items that we're discussing this evening was regarding AB eight one two three, which is the 2022 to 2027 CIP. And here, there was support for the Newport projects, TR zero two two and TR zero two three, also support for the I ninety under over crossing, which is TR zero zero three, and also support for TR twenty eight, which is the Lake Sammish Parkway non-motorized improvement project. Then we received another email which touched on multiple topics that we are discussing this evening on ID zero eight six zero, which is the strategic plan update and next steps. This person had some concerns and expressed that there should be an honest review of our progress on the plan and requested more and varied types of public comment opportunities. On AB eight one two three, which is the Spar Booster Pump Station Construction Bid Award, expressed concern that there was not a feedback, that there was not feedback provided through the neighborhood meeting that met on this topic. And then on AB seven four one eight, which is Amendment to IMC twelve point one zero Complete Streets, expressed concerns about the exemption process. And then lastly, AB eight one two three, which is the CIP again, expressed concerns and multiple concerns, one concern being that the CIP seems heavily auto-oriented. And that concludes comments we received by email specifically on items on our agenda this evening.
Thank you very much, Council President. Next item on the agenda will be Committee and Regional Reports. And we will start with Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Zach Hall. A couple of reports for this evening. First up is for Cascade Water Alliance. I wanted to quickly announce that the next Cascade Water Alliance Board meeting is next Wednesday, May twenty-sixth at three thirty PM. Also, at our last meeting, I mentioned a policy that the board was considering regarding the potential sale of Cascade Water Alliance water rights. And just to close the loop with you all, the board decided to defer any action on that until after a workshop that we're holding later next month, where we'll be discussing the future of the alliance more broadly and the Lake Taps Reservoir Project specifically. And we'll be sure to keep the council in the loop on that workshop, as it's going to be a very interesting one, I think. So for now, if you're interested, I sent you all a pretty in-the-weeds email update earlier this evening. And I'll be sure to bring it back up again later next month. Now for the Affordable Housing Committee. The next Affordable Housing Committee meeting is this Wednesday in a couple of days, May nineteenth at noon. We'll be discussing the committee's federal legislative priorities. We'll get an update on state housing actions during the recent 2021 legislative session. And we'll be getting an update on a number of different committee staff projects, including our Affordable Housing Dashboard. And I mentioned this, I think, last year, but the Affordable Housing Dashboard is a project that's in the charter for the Affordable Housing Committee. And it essentially helps collect data across the region on how cities, municipalities, and counties are stacking up when it comes to affordable housing in their cities. So that'll be really interesting to view. And as soon as we have a public link, I'll be sure to share with you all, too. In the coming months, the committee will also be discussing how best we can support cities who recently passed their own affordable housing sales tax, like we did here in Issaquah. And some of the questions that we'll consider, we just had a really interesting Sound Cities Association Caucus meeting on this. And some of the questions we'll consider are, you know, can the committee produce a set of guiding questions to help cities make decisions about those revenues? Should decision makers dedicate funding directly to local projects or pool funding regionally? And like Arch or Skip, and Skip is the South King County version of Arch. Those are good examples of regional pooling. And then finally, if cities don't have long-term plans for those revenues, should they consider giving their authority back to the county who does have a plan? So I think those are really interesting questions, and I'll keep you all in the loop on that discussion as well. And that concludes my reports.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Councilmember D. Michelle.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember D. Michelle. On May fifth, I attended the Eastside Human Services Forum Legislative Committee, and we discussed the legislative session and heard a presentation on the Best Starts for Kids Renewal Levy. The committee voted to send the Best Starts for Kids Renewal to the Forum Board of Directors so they can consider endorsing the measure. And I will discuss this action further under Good of the Order this evening to get direction from the council on the vote. On May twelfth, I attended the Connect to Community Advisory Group. We continued our discussion of privacy and disclosure issues related to the community information exchange. And on May fourteenth, I attended the Eastside Transportation Partnership. Jenna Sun, Bellevue City Councilmember, was elected vice chair of the group. And the rest of the meeting was an interactive dialogue with state representatives Davina Doer, Vandana Slatter, and Bill Ramos regarding the legislative session and a proposed transportation package. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Michelle. Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Very short report. The Chamber of Commerce meeting for Issaquah has been postponed by a week to allow for their salmon day's golf tournament. And so it will be on May twenty-eighth, and I don't yet have the agenda. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I have no report this evening. Thanks.
Great brief. Thank you. Councilmember Martz is up next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. The Peget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board met on Thursday, May sixth. And we had one action item, which was approve the Regional Transit Oriented Development Advisory Committee Charter. It was not contentious. We had a number of discussion items. Probably the one that generated the most discussion was regional housing strategy tools and actions. And the feedback was, I would say generally, that we need multiple tracks. We need a track for the, let's say, zero to thirty folks that are homeless and in transition. We need the thirty to seventy, which is folks that are substantially below, that are housed but are substantially below area median income. And then, you know, seventy to a hundred percent plus. And then different parts of the county have different success. So South County has a lot of seventy to a hundred or seventy to a hundred and twenty percent of AMI housing. Not so much in Issaquah. So each of these market segments have different priorities, different funding strategies or architectures, and they in some senses compete with each other. So it was a very thoughtful conversation that occurred with input from probably twenty-five electeds. So it was good. Not sure where it'll all wind up, but I think that the PSRC folks appreciated the feedback. And then Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee didn't meet this month. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Chris Ray. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors met last Thursday, May thirteenth at four o'clock in a remote meeting format. Councilmembers Goodman, Hall, and I attended the meeting. The chief provided us an update on vaccinations, which are slowing both locally and statewide. Eastside Fire and Rescue is targeting June twelfth. It's the last day of operations at the vaccination site unless there is a change in community need. In all, we have delivered between fifteen and twenty thousand doses of the Moderna vaccine to residents through that site. Eastside Fire and Rescue continues to move forward with the PFAS remediation work plan that is to complete by June of 2022. Brush fires continue to be a significant concern. The week of April fifteenth, where we had temperatures in the seventies, there were three brush fires that Eastside Fire and Rescue responded to. This may be indicative of the type of wildland fire season we might expect this year. Just as a note, earlier this month, the King County Council passed a fireworks ban that goes into effect in 2022. The ban will prohibit the retail sale and discharge of fireworks in unincorporated portions of King County. The chief provided a brief update on the Gilman Village Fire at Agoness and the Nail Salon, and the investigation of that fire is still ongoing. The bulk of the meeting was a discussion around the Eastside Fire and Rescue Funding Formula. Historically, Eastside Fire and Rescue Partners have updated the funding model every seven to eight years. It's not clear that we're going to be making a change to the formula this year, but there were some interesting things discussed. And I will be meeting later with the mayor and the city administrator and Councilmembers Hall and Goodman to talk about how we'd like to move that forward. Finally, the King County Growth Management Planning Council is scheduled to meet on May twenty-sixth at four o'clock, also in a remote meeting format. The topic of this meeting will be a review of the public comments on the draft countywide planning policies and to consider any amendments. The detailed agenda for this meeting has not yet been finalized. I'd like to give a big thanks to Community Planning and Development Director Dolly Wall for drafting Issaquah's response to the draft county planning policies. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. Council President Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a few reports this evening. The Title eighteen Ad Hoc Committee met on May thirteenth. This is the Ad Hoc Committee consisting of myself and councilmembers Goodman and Walsh. And we are discussing Land Use Code, which is Title eighteen. And we, at this meeting on May thirteenth, we discussed the timeline that had been drafted by staff and the consultants working on this project for engagement with the Planning Policy Committee and also joint committee meetings with other of our volunteer commissions. And the next meeting has not yet been set for this Ad Hoc Committee. The KCD, so King Conservation District Advisory Committee has formed a subcommittee specific to election reform, and this met on May thirteenth. The issue here is that the King Conservation District funds conservation work throughout King County, most of the county, and they have an elected board. But the elections take place at a time where no other elections are occurring. And they have, in this last election, despite sending out postcards and extensive outreach, they had still less than one percent of eligible voters participate. It's all done online, and it's also done at an unusual time of year because there aren't other elections occurring when this election occurs. And so this committee will be working on how to best approach this issue and potentially working with the state legislature on how we might have this election to have more participation so that there can be more people voting in this. And the important work that they do will have more people voting to determine the future of this organization. And then the Wyra Eight Salmon Recovery Council will be meeting on May twentieth. Wyra Eight is the technical name for our watershed. And there are two decision items on the agenda. One is a letter on proposed asphalt plants along SR one sixty-nine in the Cedar River Basin. And so this would be a letter to the King County Department of Local Services emphasizing considerations and avoidance of potential adverse impacts to salmon with that asphalt plant development. And then also a grant round funding recommendations for cooperative watershed management grants in 2021. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President. Next item on the agenda this evening is the mayor's report. And everyone, the executive section is on collective bargaining per R C W forty-two point three oh, point one four oh, print four, print A. The item is expected to last thirty minutes, and no action is anticipated in open session. This week is Emergency Services Week, and I'm going to go through a proclamation. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of Eastside Fire and Rescue stand ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the members of Eastside Fire and Rescue, whether career or reserves, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week, please join me and the mayors of Issaquah, North Bend, and Sammish to celebrate this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities that honor and thank our local emergency services personnel. I'm going to do a second proclamation this evening as well. This is Asian Pacific Heritage Month. And whereas there are eight thousand seven hundred and ninety Asian Pacific American residents in the city of Issaquah, which represents twenty-three point two percent of our population, and whereas we acknowledge the contributions of Asian Pacific Americans to our local arts, education, sciences, and to our economic, social, and democratic institutions, and whereas Issaquah celebrates Asian Pacific Americans' embedded history to recognize and honor individuals, families, and businesses, and whereas we admit the past hardship and continued inequality for Asian and Pacific Americans and strive to foster inclusion to ensure all people have an equal opportunity, and whereas we commit to embracing the diversity by paying tribute to Asian American and Pacific heritage through education, acknowledgement, and celebration within our community, please join me in the observance of Asian Pacific Heritage Month in the city of Issaquah for the month of May, 2021. May is a pretty busy month. It's also National Public Works Week. So this week, I also issued a proclamation for National Public Works Week, May sixteenth to twenty-second. The year 2021 marks the sixty-first annual National Public Works Recognition Week. The city's infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of our public works professionals. They are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels, and they are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our city's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our residents and community members. So please join me this week in giving extra thanks to our public works personnel. I will be going to their six-thirty AM Thursday evening to deliver the proclamation. A little bit of great news, too, about the Southeast Forty-third Way Signal. That project is now complete. The new intersection is open at Southeast Forty-third Way at the entrance to Providence Point. The Providence Point community held a celebration last weekend, which included ribbon-cutting parade, ribbon-cutting, and a parade in the neighborhood that Councilmember D. Michelle and I both got to participate in. This has been a long time coming, and I'm so thankful for the hard work of our city council, staff, and community to make this a reality. The new signal not only enhances safety for drivers, but also pedestrians and cyclists. Along with the new intersection, the project included relocating utilities, constructing detention and stormwater treatment facilities, and installing new sidewalks. Anyone who would like to learn more about the project can go to isiquawad.gov/southeastfortythird. Going to give an update on the Issaquah Community Vaccine Partnership as well, and going to have to sort of check in with Deputy Council President Ray before because my numbers are slightly different, but I think I have an explanation for why. The information that I have from our vaccination meeting is that the COVID vaccination site at Lake Sammish State Park has administered more than ninety-five hundred doses and anticipates doing six thousand more in the coming months as community members return for their second dose. However, Eastside Fire and Rescue has also been doing clinics out at the Snoqualmie tribal lands as well as doing mobile services. So I'm going to go with Deputy Council President Ray's number, which was higher than mine. We do now have opening appointments for anyone who only needs the second dose of the Moderna vaccine. And data is showing us that close to eighty percent of eligible residents in our zip codes have started their vaccine series. So we are now, yeah, it's a good number. We are now focusing efforts on reaching community members who may be vaccine hesitant so that we can share more resources. If anyone knows anyone who needs special assistance, please make sure to call us at four two five eight three seven three three zero zero. We're here to help. And anyone looking for more information on that can find it at isiquawad.gov/vaccine on our website. And that concludes the mayor's report for today, now that I have the correct report open. I'll open one more script. Sorry for the delay. There we go. Okay, thanks for your patience. The next item on our agenda this evening is some informational updates. We'll start with the first one, which is ID oh eight six oh. It's the Strategic Plan Update and Next Steps. And I'd like to invite City Administrator Balkowicz to present this item. Molly.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. We're here to talk a little bit about the next couple of months and the next phase of sort of our annual year of reflection and evaluation of the work that we do. Have a couple of slides to talk about that. So Clerk Keizer, next slide, please. The strategic plan was adopted two years ago this month in 2019. The plan includes an annual schedule of review that unfortunately, because of the COVID pandemic last year, we were not able to do for the first time. So we are moving forward this year for the first time since the plan was adopted in 2019 with the full completion of this annual schedule. Just to kind of orient you to that, if you look at the very bottom on the left-hand side, you have the Work Plan Implementation piece of the circle. That's basically where we're at now. Once the budget's completed, we begin work. And certainly here now in the second quarter of the year, we're well in with the work plan implementation. What I'm going to talk about this evening are the next several pieces of the circle for the very next steps that we would have as we get ready to, believe it or not, begin preparation of the 2022 annual budget. Next slide, Clerk Keizer. So the next phase of this was the community survey. Every two years, the city conducts a survey of our residents. There was a typo in the staff report on page six of your packet where it referred to the survey being done in April, May, 2020. Of course, that's April, May, 2021 this year. We've had over six hundred residents respond to the survey. We have the initial results from that survey and plan to come back to you on June fifteenth to share with you the results of that in the study session. On June seventh, though, we are going to start the process by celebrating the second year of the strategic plan. We have a video that we are going to premiere and will share with social media. We're also going to be doing outreach to our residents, which will include not only social media, but also a postcard that we will send to all of our residents to remind them of the strategic plan, of the goals, of a place that they can go online to get more information and provide even more additional feedback beyond the community survey, and let them know about the study session that would be coming up the following week on June fifteenth. On June fifteenth, we will share the results of the survey and also get any additional community feedback on those results. And as the strategic plan itself delineates, once we get those community survey results back, we are then moving into a strategic plan adjustment mode. And this is a meeting that the council's never had. And that is a study session to take a step back, to look at the strategic plan, look at the results of the community survey, look at where we are with our work plan, and make any adjustments that the council might think is appropriate to move forward with the strategic plan. We'll also be beginning the very first topics regarding the budget. The administration will come to the council with some strategy and budget planning issues for the council to talk about in the study session on July thirteenth. On July nineteenth, at the council meeting, we will be submitting to you, once again, all of the quarterly reports except the mid-year budget report. We did that a couple of months ago by just putting those reports on the agenda and having any questions. That seemed to have been well received by the council. So on July nineteenth, we'll come back with a work plan report, the CIP report, the mid-year performance measure report. All that will be there on the agenda for July nineteenth. On August second, we will come back to the council for a meeting you are familiar with, and that is our annual revenue broadcast. So we'll have an opportunity during the months of June and July to talk about survey and the plan adjustments. We'll start looking then at what we see the revenue being for the fiscal '22 on August second. And then when we come back from the summer recess in September, we'll start up with the budget season. We'll have, as we did last year, two community meetings. We'll have one just before the budget is submitted, either in late August or early September. Then the budget will be submitted. We'll have another community meeting. And then, of course, the regular council deliberations for the budget. So that just gives you a preview, Madam Mayor, members of the council, of what we're planning to do to implement the strategic plan's vision of review of the plan itself. And so we'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has. Otherwise, we'll start this process at your next regular meeting on June seventh.
Thank you, City Administrator. I'm keeping an eye on the chat. Just want to remind any of the council members to adjust the two lines to all panelists so that I'm able to see if you have a question or a comment. And I'll give it a few seconds. Councilmember Goodman. Oh, I see. This is from the City Clerk. Okay, we no longer have video feed from Councilmember Goodman, so... Okay, we do, we no longer have video feed from Councilmember Goodman, so assuming that she's having some connection issues. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment or have a question? Otherwise, I'll move on to the next informational update. Is that a hand, like, go ahead and move on, or I have a question? That's I have a question. Councilmember Hall.
Thanks, this is Councilmember Hall. This is very exciting. Thanks for giving us a quick update. I like that we're celebrating. I think that we got a really interesting and good idea from a community member who emailed us, though, to also, you know, acknowledge kind of the shortcomings of where we are in the plan, you know, acknowledge that COVID put a wrench in some of it, and, you know, what we can be doing better, you know, moving forward. So I'm kind of curious, from an administration perspective, where that would fit in this timeline. I'm not sure if that would be in the video, or if that would just be more par folded into our discussions at that first study session where we take a step back.
Thank you. City Administrator Balkowicz.
Well, I guess first I would challenge the premise of the commenter. I think we've accomplished quite a bit with the strategic plan, and I think it's important to remind the residents of the community all that we have done, and I think the video will do that. And we want to really share and celebrate. I mean, there has been so much done, even with the pandemic, to move Issaquah forward. The investment, the projects, just the Signal Project that Mayor Polly mentioned earlier was really one of, you know, the top results of the strategic plan focusing on infrastructure. So I think we're going to celebrate that. If there are members of the community that feel there are shortcomings, that's why we're sending a postcard to every single resident of the community. We do that maybe once or twice a year. We feel it's such an important topic, we really want to invite the community to help evaluate that. The other thing that we did this year, of course, is the community survey. 600 residents kind of selected somewhat at random to, you know, balance responses from all over the community have also let us know what they think. So I think as the strategic plan really contemplates, we're trying to get input from lots of different places so that when the council does take that step back, it's informed. So Councilmember Hall, I hope that answers your question. I think really, we've got the community survey. We're asking folks through a postcard to let us know, participate in the discussions in the month of June. So hopefully, if there are shortcomings, that a few members of the community are in the field, that they'll step forward and be heard.
Good answer.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. I'm not seeing any other questions or comments at this time, so I think what we will do is move on to the next item if nobody has anything else, which is the consent calendar. So the consent calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if it's authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. The clerk's office today did circulate a revised copy of the April 26th special council study session minutes. Agenda item C was modified to add "and support for investing in the arts and the newly approved creative arts district as a help to economic recovery," as one of the suggestions under the federal COVID-19 relief funding conversation. This is the version that will be adopted on approval of the consent calendar. Have the payables and payrolls been reviewed?
They have.
Sorry, they have.
Thank you. I could see you leaning in. I knew something was coming. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? And if not, if somebody cared to make a motion? Council President Hunt?
Thank you, this is Council President Hunt. I move to adopt the consent calendar as it appears in this evening's agenda as amended.
And Deputy Council President Ray?
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded, and I will let the city clerk do a roll call vote.
Starting with Councilmember Martz.
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember D. Michelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, that passes unanimously. The next item of business this evening is a public hearing, AB 8123, the 2022 to 2027 Capital Improvement Plan, including the Transportation Improvement Program. We will be conducting the public hearing and approving the resolution. A public hearing on this item was held at the May 3rd council meeting and was continued to tonight's meeting. This item was last before council at the May 11th council study session, and I'd like to invite Suzie Moncel, Senior Budget Analyst, to provide a brief presentation before we open the hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. If you'll just allow me one moment to pull up my very brief presentation. All right. All right, good evening. I am Senior Budget Analyst Suzie Moncel, and I am here to provide a brief intro to the continued public hearing on the 2022 to 2027 Capital Improvement Plan. RCW 3577010 requires cities to hold a public hearing for the Proposed Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP. And that's the transportation element of the Capital Improvement Plan, or the CIP. And we'll, of course, appreciate all feedback from the community on the other elements of the proposed CIP, just besides the transportation element. And this public hearing was opened at the May 3rd city council meeting and will be continuing tonight. As a reminder of where we are in this year's CIP schedule, the CIP was transmitted to the council and community on April 19th, and staff gave an overview presentation that evening. The administration also held a community meeting on the April 20th covering similar material as the 19th. The council began deliberations on April 27th by considering the nonutility projects returning on May 3rd to discuss the utility projects and receive some follow-up information from the April 27 deliberations. The council then further deliberated at the May 11 study session last week, and we are back tonight to continue the public hearing. And since the public hearing was opened a couple of weeks ago, the administration has updated the proposed CIP to reflect some of the feedback received during the council deliberations. So before we continue the public hearing, I'd like to just briefly summarize those adjustments here. So first, we shifted the projects that are originally funded, proposed to be funded by the Lakeside Development Agreement to, there should be a "2" in there, REIT I. Second, we increased funding for the Pavement Management Program, or TR 030, by $800,000 in 2022, funded by REIT I. And that brings that project on par with the other years in the CIP. Then the third, we added funds for Northwest Mamish Road Non-Motorized Improvement, or TR 028, to complete design by the end of 2023. And we also accelerated the construction to begin in 2024 and commence in 2025, provided that the city identifies a funding source for that construction. And finally, we reduced or shifted funding for other REIT I-supported projects to accommodate the revisions that I just ran through. And following these adjustments, the updated proposed CIP is reflected in this table, and all of the information in this table is also in the document that's currently on the city's website and is in tonight's council packet as well. And with that, I can turn it back to you, Mayor Polly. I can stop sharing. There you go.
Thank you. Before we go and open the public hearing, I just want to give the council an opportunity to indicate in the chat box whether you have any questions on the brief presentation that you had tonight. I'll give it a few seconds. If there are none, the guidelines for citizens' comments for this public hearing apply, that we, I read earlier, also apply under this public hearing, and I will open the public hearing at 7:40 p.m. this evening. For those who have joined us tonight and would like to make comments but did not sign up in advance, you can raise your virtual hand. And city clerk, do we have anyone on the meeting tonight with us?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a few members of the public, so a reminder to you, if you're interested in making comments tonight, as the mayor said, please press star three if you're on the phone, or if you're, have joined by computer, please find the hand icon to raise your virtual hand. You may find that by opening up the participant panel. You're also welcome to send me the hosted chat message. And Mayor, I'll just monitor the list for a moment here.
That sounds great. And on the earlier signup list, did we have anybody sign up to speak this evening?
No.
Okay, thank you. I'll give it a few seconds, let me know.
All right, I'm not seeing anyone indicated desire to make comments under the public hearing.
As the, for closing the public hearing, do I need a motion from council or just announce?
No, you can just announce the closure. If there was a desire to continue the hearing, there would need to be a motion.
Okay, thank you. So seeing that there is no public wanting to provide information tonight at the public hearing, the public hearing is closed at 7:42 p.m., and we will move on to the next step, which is, there is a motion included in the council's packet this evening to approve the CIP. After a discussion with Council President Hunt last week, there is also an alternate motion, which I'll ask city clerk to put both of those into the chat box, and we'll be looking for someone to make a motion on one of those so we can have a discussion. And we're just waiting to get those in the chat box. And this first motion has been put in, and the second motion has been put in. Do I, Council President Hunt, would you care to make a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is Council President Hunt. I move to postpone AB 8123, the 2022 to 2027 Capital Improvement Plan, including Transportation Improvement Program, to the June 7th, 2021 council meeting, and direct the administration to prepare a letter on behalf of the city council to accompany the CIP when it returns for council consideration.
And is there a second for the motion? Deputy Council President Ray?
I'll second.
So it has been moved and seconded to postpone the approval to the June 7th meeting, and Council President, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. This is Council President Hunt. As the mayor just mentioned, she and I met at the end of last week, and one of the things that I had been, that I had mentioned earlier was that I think having more parallels between our budgeting process and the CIP would be useful, and one of those things that we could do to make our processes more similar across with the budget and the CIP would be to include a letter from the council with the CIP. I think this could have a number of positive benefits in terms of tracking our conversations. We only talk about the CIP every two years, and I think over that time, there's some continuity of the conversation is lost, things like the intent, or things like discussions that we have on policy that don't get translated into changes, but are things that we would like the next people that are considering, the next council that's considering the CIP to keep in mind. So similar to the budget process, which I think, I at least personally found very helpful as the council president last year, to look at that previous budget letter from the council, from the council president in the previous year to carry over some of those thoughts. I think it could help us document our process, and I think we do have this precedent with the budget letter. And there were a number of conversations that I think are really valuable, but also not, not completely finished. We talked a lot about wanting to, for example, with the Pavement Management Program, to proactively steward our infrastructure and continue to make changes towards that. There was also longstanding safety concerns that were raised from the community and also in the various commissions that looked at the CIP this year, that I think it would be helpful to document and to continue to explore how we might develop those into a plan or into a project that is in the CIP, longstanding community concerns that are not currently in the plan. The one that, for me, comes to mind is the Squawk Mountain Uphill Bike Lane. This is identified as the Master Mobility Plan as one of the highest priorities, but it's not currently in the CIP. And so I think those sort of sidewalk projects, mobility projects, non-motorized improvement projects that are longstanding concerns, that we don't have an identified funding source, I think there's been a lot of discussion around that this year, and I think that conversation isn't finished. So I think having a letter that documents that sort of conversation would be beneficial. And then, lastly, we did make a number of improvements, I think, to the CIP process, and I think that having the various commissions look at the CIP was a great addition. Based on their feedback, they seem to engage with the CIP and give us really good feedback, and I would like to see us continue that and have more of a policy dialogue before we get into the CIP. Because in the end, none of the feedback directly translated into changes for the CIP, and I think part of that was because of the way that we had the conversations. We didn't, I think it might be better to have the policy-based conversations first, and the commissions can work on those higher-level policies and give us that kind of feedback, which then could be translated into more of the formation of the CIP. So I think documenting that would also be beneficial. And then, lastly, I wanted to make this motion to see what council thinks about this idea of having a letter to include these sorts of documentation, because we haven't done them before, so also just really wanting to get your thoughts on this, and also making the motion for, to have that discussion.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray, did you have, did you want to start with comments?
No, I'm going to wait if that's okay.
For sure. Looking into the chat box to see who would like to provide some comments and response to the council president's motion. Okay, let's start with Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I think it's, I'm going to amend, not comment, no, sorry. I think it's a good idea. I'm not, I would, not sure what the substance would be, but I think the continuity of it is a good idea. Thanks for bringing it up.
Thank you. Anybody else want to make comments before I circle back to Councilmember Hunt? Anything else? Again, I'll just keep my eye on the chat and look for some more amendments. There's a typo in the chat. Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, thanks, this is Councilmember Hall. Just quickly to say, I also think it's a good idea wherever we can build up institutional memory within the council, within city administration, within city staff. I think there's a benefit there to the community, so I personally don't see any downsides to this, and I'd be interested in if any other council members feel that there is a downside. Thanks.
Thanks for your thoughts. Councilmember Martz has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question whether the administration has any concerns with this potential alternate motion in terms of timing or any impact on our operations this year?
That's a great question. This is the mayor. Thank you, thinking that deliberations have moved to a place where there's a lot of certainty now in what is in and what is not in the plan, the change in the schedule is not an issue. Think that the comments that the council president made were really good, and that we should be looking for ways to document the good work that came out during deliberations and all the different inputs that the council has taken into consideration when they made these changes, so we're very supportive of the motion.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing anything else, but I was going to, okay, a question from Councilmember Hall. I was going to, at some point, circle back to Deputy Council President Ray as well. So Councilmember Hall for a question first.
Oh, and I see Councilmember- Oh, and I see Councilmember Goodman had a comment before me too, but if it's okay, my question's super quick. And that is, if we move forward with this, would administration, would city administration need any additional context or feedback from us about our discussions tonight to help draft that letter? Or would the goal be to reexamine our dialogue from previous discussions to write the letter?
Great question. Since we haven't done this before, I will check, you know, we've done it with our operating budget, not our capital budget. Beth Goldberg, Director Goldberg is on this evening. And we'll see typically she's been taking notes during all of your deliberations. And so I believe she probably has enough information or the administrator Bakuwitz, whoever would like to take that question.
Go ahead, Director Goldberg.
I'm happy to take the question. Good evening, everyone. This is Beth Goldberg, Finance Director. And I think from listening to the dialogue over the last month, month and a half, we've got the basis to start drafting the letter. And then what we typically do with the operating letter is we'll take the first cut at it, share the draft with Council President Hunt, and then go through the revision process based on what we as staff and the administration heard from the discussion and what Council President Hunt heard through through the dialogue and wants to emphasize in the letter.
Director Goldberg, just a follow up on that. I believe that that comes with the approval. And therefore, a council member could make a suggestion for a change if the majority wanted to include that change in the letter after the council president's header edits.
Correct. So that would be, it would be included in the packet that you receive for the June 7th meeting. It would be in that packet. And then it would be part of the record of what the council would adopt on on June 7th. So there would be an opportunity, certainly if, you know, changes needed to be made, there would be an opportunity for that. I don't in 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 experience with the operating budget, I think by the time we get to that point, I think it's, I haven't seen a lot of changes made to it. But certainly if someone had, you know, an objection or wanted to suggest a change, that I think could be part of the council's dialogue that evening.
Okay, thank you, Director Goldberg. Councilmember Goodman did have a comment, but she's fine. And so Deputy Council President Ray just wants to know if you had anything to add?
If I might, thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Chris Ray. I think it's always good to provide context for the next time something comes around. So this is a way to to memorialize the conversations we've had. It's a way to provide continuity. It's a way to to talk to the rationale that we went through. And it's a good way for us to document our thought processes, which will be helpful down the road. So I think I think this could be a a new, a good new way of doing business.
Great. Thank you for that. I am not seeing any additional comments or questions. So I will just reread the motion that is on the table right now, which is to postpone AB 8123, the 2022 through 2027 capital improvement plan, including transportation improvement program to the June 7th, 2021 council meeting, and directing the administration to prepare a letter on behalf of the city council to accompany the CIP when it returns for council consideration. And we, it has been moved and seconded, and we'll go for a roll call vote.
Starting with Deputy Council President Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh.
Aye.
Councilmember De Michelle.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Mart.
Aye.
That's seven i's, zero nays.
Thank you, City Clerk. That passes unanimously. And the next item of business is regular business, but we have no scheduled items under that this evening. I did want to circle back. We have good of the order next. And I think I heard from a couple of council members tonight that they might have something. So if you can indicate in the chats, who would like to go first? And let's start with Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you. This is Councilmember De Michelle. And I alluded to this item earlier under committee reports. And I had quite a bit to present, so I did write out my remarks. So just bear with me for a second. So. So under good of the order, the King County Council has authorized the placement of the Best Starts for Kids renewal levy on the August 3rd primary ballot. And at the same time, the Eastside Human Services Forum Legislative Committee is recommending that the Eastside Human Services Board of Directors endorse the levy at their next meeting, which is June 20th. As the council's representative to the Eastside Human Services Forum Board, I would like to have direction from the council regarding that vote. And I'm also wondering if the council would like to consider endorsing the renewal levy at a future future council meeting. I'm going to do a very quick background. The current best start for starts for kids levy raised approximately $700 million over six years. It has served 377,000 at-risk children and families from newborn to age five and 40,000 youth ages six through 24. The current proposal will raise approximately 811 million over six years. The rate is 19 cents per 1,000 of assessed valuation, which is about five cents more than the previous levy. And this equals about $114 per year for a $600,000 home. I asked City Administrator Bakuwitz to distribute a PowerPoint that was presented at Sound Cities Association in March, which provided much more information about the programmatic initiatives for Best Starts for Kids, which are way too many to review tonight. And I also checked with surrounding cities to see what they're doing with regards to endorsing the Best Starts for Kids. And I did get a response from Bellevue Mayor Lynn Robinson. She said that the entire Bellevue City Council has individually signed a letter of support, and they plan to consider endorsing the measure as a council at a future meeting. I heard from Councilmember Lynch in Redmond, and they are, they have not taken it up yet. And I did not hear back from the Kirkland representative on the Eastside Human Services Forum. So that is what I'd like to get some feedback on from the council, whether, first of all, giving me direction for how to vote on June 20th. And also, would the council like to consider endorsing it as the council at a future council meeting?
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. So Councilmember Hall has a question.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Zach Hall. And thank you, Councilmember De Michelle, for bringing this up at good of the order. I, you know, I want to say yes is a longstanding program that does a lot of good work, especially in the P to five, which is prenatal to age five age bracket. I was just curious during your presentation if, because I didn't see it in here, if there was any discussion about how, you know, new state investments in early learning, they, you know, the state just passed the Fair Starts for Kids Act, which is a massive increase in spending in in early learning across the whole state. So I'm kind of interested in how those two interact and if King County has, you know, reviewed how that's going to play out statewide and adjusted as needed our own levy. So I was wondering if any information was was brought up about that, or if not, maybe you could you could ask.
Yeah, I'd be happy to ask. It was a part of the presentation. The PowerPoint that I sent you was sent out, was presented to the Sound Cities Association in March. So a lot, a lot has changed since then. And we certainly could, if we do decide to consider it at a future meeting, garner additional information. Yes.
Great question. Councilmember Hall, it looks like Deputy Council President Ray would also like to ask a question.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Chris Ray. I think this may be a a question for those who have been around longer than me. I know we've kicked kicked around the idea of endorsing campaigns as a body before. And I don't know if we've ever done it or if we have reached a consensus on when we should do it and what the criteria is. I mean, so I just have this very foggy notion that we've, we've, we dabbled around this before, but I don't remember how we resolved that. But I bet you Councilmember Martz does.
Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've endorsed a number of school district related bonds and levies, just as an as an example. I don't remember if we specifically endorsed Best Starts for Kids last time. Maybe Councilmember Goodman remembers, but we've, we do do it upon occasion. And that's all I can say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. Councilmember Martz is right. We have done it on several occasions. I would say, in the interest of being fair, that not all council members have felt that that was appropriate. And however, we have, to my recollection, never endorsed something without a presentation directly from the proponent, the, so like King County would come out to us and make a presentation. I do remember this one, and it was, I don't know that controversial is the right word, but it was not without controversy, I will say, because it was not, the ideas on what they were, the specifics on what the money was going to be used for was not, had not been fully formed. And so there were a lot of questions. So that would be, that would be my recollection.
Thank you both for that. It does help to have that institutional knowledge. Appreciate Councilmember Hall's question. Does anybody else, if Councilmember De Michelle is taking this back, have additional questions that they would like her to take or comment? And let's go to Councilmember Martz.
Yeah, I'll follow up what Councilmember Goodman said. There had been questions about how money would be spent. There were also questions about what the governance model was going to look like for what was a was a hefty levy. And so I would also very much like to see King County or whomever come before us and present on it. We did get a presentation that FCA Pick, the Pick had feedback on that presentation. I would love to see a further, more recent adapted presentation. And I think for anybody who is not familiar with Best Start for Kids, it would be absolute minimum requirement to consider something like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. I also see that our attorney would like to make some comments. Tim?
Just a reminder that state law says that before you can endorse a ballot proposition, that it needs to be on your agenda with the ballot title, and you need to take public comment from both proponents and opponents before you can make an endorsement. So just procedurally, you need to do that before you can endorse this ballot measure if you want to consider doing that.
Thank you for clarifying that. I am not seeing anybody who has, oh, there we go, Council President Hunt with a comment.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I am not as familiar with with this. And so I think it would be very helpful to have that presentation. And I, I think if it's possible to have it before the June 20th, then I might be able to better give feedback on what sort of questions you might ask for that meeting. But at this time, since I don't have as much familiarity with it, I don't, I don't have any specific questions. So I think a presentation, which seems like a number of council members have mentioned, I think that would be super helpful for me.
Thank you. It looks like I was going to come back to Councilmember De Michelle at the end. But we, do you want to comment now? It looks like there may not be anyone else with a comment. Want to wrap us up?
Sure. I think that having a presentation is a great idea. And I understand that we need to have both pro and con presentations on the during the presentation or in conjunction with the presentation. So I think I think it will be a very good dialogue. I would suggest that we reach out to Sheila Capastani, who's the director of that program. Either she or one of her assistants can make that presentation and I think would be able to answer a lot of the questions. I remember that six years ago, when that was first out, I did work on it as a citizen, getting that passed. And there were a lot of questions, and I think a lot of those questions have been answered over the last six years. It's much more of a solid program and a solid, solid venture at this point, after the years of of experience they have with it. But it would be good for all the people that don't know about that and how it works now to have those questions answered. Yeah. So I think I agree with all of the statements that have been made by my council members, fellow council members. Thank you.
So I think you have what you need. And I hear potentially a request that council leadership and administration work on scheduling with the individual that you mentioned. Okay, thank you very much. I also thought there, Councilmember Goodman, before we go.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I just wanted to emphasize my support for getting answers to the question, the broad question that Councilmember Hall posed about any, you know, the legislative session, any monies. And I think it's good to know how the monies might be spent differently, how the programs are similar. I think that's important. The only other suggestion I would have is, when is, is this an August ballot? Okay, so I'm not sure how critical it is to have it in time for the Pick meeting on June 20th. If we haven't had an opportunity to have all of our questions answered, I think that's more important than having, than trying to be ready for the, in advance for the pick vote, because that will come up very quickly. Yeah, anyway.
Thank you. And Councilmember De Michelle, you want data clarification?
Right. The vote that we're talking about on June 20th is for the Eastside Human Services Forum. And that is a group made up of municipal, municipal representatives and school districts and nonprofits. So that would be speaking specifically from the human services community. Thank you.
Sorry for mixing it up. I think my comment still stands. I think it's more important that before we feed in to our comments to you about what your vote should be, it's most important that we have all of our questions answered so that we're fully informed about the comments we give to you. Thanks.
Thank you, and thank you for that clarification. I'm not seeing any additional entries of folks wanting to ask questions or talk on this one. And I just want to leave it open for a second or two. Is there any additional good of the order items? You can indicate it in the chat while I am going through what the next upcoming meeting schedule looks like. So we have a city council study session on Tuesday, May 25th with potential agenda items, including the Sign Code, Police Accountability Equity and Human Services Action Plan, Human Services Commission Equity Update, and a discussion of equity framework. City Council Regular Meeting on June 7th has the following potential agenda items, which include the end of the 2021 Legislative Session Report, the Public Benefit Rating System application, and the American Rescue Plan Act funding allocation. Not seeing that there are any other good of the order items. We'll next be moving into executive session. So as earlier announced, there will be an executive session this evening to discuss collective bargaining per RCW 42.30, point 140 per N4 per N A. And this item is expected to take approximately 30 minutes and may be extended if needed. No action is anticipated to follow in open session. And as a reminder, executive sessions are closed to the public. We will now recess into executive session at 8:10 PM. And I asked the City Clerk to move the city council into a separate session within this meeting. Anyone who is not part of the closed session will remain in the main meeting, and you're welcome to stay in the meeting until it is reconvened. City Clerk?
Yes, me just a moment here.